All right, the most people we've had in a long time here.
Have to be loud.
Yep. I'd like to call to order the Patekett Regional School Committee meeting, business meeting of March 22nd, 2022, roll call vote. Wayne Adams.
Here.
Emily Dwyer.
Yeah.
Marie Felzani.
Yeah.
Dick Hodges.
Here.
Chris Markins.
Here.
Chris Redding.
Here.
Dina Trada. Here. Ashley McGlaughlin is not here and Joanna and Blanchard. Joanna Blanchard is not here. Joanna and Blanchard.
Thank you.
Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, great. Subcommittee updates, finance, Wayne.
Just finishing signing the warrant as we speak. They'll be done tonight. For the next two weeks, people will be paid.
Excellent. Emily?
We have no updates.
No updates. Policy committee?
I believe we just ended the last policy just in time for the five-year review. And I just got something from mask with a number of amendments, additions, subtractions, and I'm scared to even look at them right now. So I think I'm going to take a couple of weeks off and I encourage my committee to do the same.
You do a lot of work. Thanks, Dick. Marie. Strategic plan, oh, communications. Joanna's not here. Strategic plan?
Yeah, we would say a lot of work. Dr. Bob Hallam, he was really put a lot of work and effort into sending the survey out, compiling the results, analyzing the results, and then the three of us get together or eat themselves. And Ashley. And that's where we stand right now. We're analyzing them, trying to find our rhythm. Most important thing is from all the stakeholders, from the public to the students to the teachers. And there'll be more coming.
Great. Thank you. At this time, Mary, we don't have any public comment current.
No, we don't.
Okay. And next up, we would like to do a recognition of students and staff.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. It's not often we are able to get this many people all in one room. So thank you, everybody, for coming. I think we're all very excited to be able to recognize just some of the amazing things your students have done throughout the school year and a couple of our teachers as well, or certainly with the support of the teachers. So we have our principals here, and I know Ms. Petrie's not here, but she's got a fill-in here. So that'll work out all right. So we're going to open up. What we're going to do is when we go through these slides, on each slide, we're going to recognize the group of students or the student that's on that slide. And when that slide's done, if you walk up, students, if you walk up over here, the chair will give you a certificate. I have a little gift to give you as well. We have a photographer who'll take the pictures. And then you can, we'll do an applause after each group and then they can sit back down. Parents, I understand timeframes really tight. So after that school is done, if you want to go, that's fine, not a problem. If you want to stay the whole thing and see what other things have happened, that's great as well. But totally understand the restrictions of time that we're all under right now. But thank you again so much for being here this evening. So we'll open up with Bagnell. So I believe I saw Mr. Day bundled up on his way in. So Mr. Day, you want to come up?
Thank you, Dr. B, and thank you, School Committee, for this acknowledgement, to be able to recognize some of the great things happening, not just at Bagnell, but at Kentucky. But at Bagnell School, we have two groups that I wanted to recognize tonight. And the first group is a group of teachers. So our grade four teachers at the Bagnell School. And those teachers are Carrie Gale, Jess Souza, and Amy Lapata. And I wanted to recognize them tonight because they have gone this year above and beyond in a couple of areas. And what they've done, as you can see in the slides we have up there, you know, and come up with different activities for the kids, thinking outside the box, like STEM activity for creating amazing day grade for the kids. Going outside to think of our new curricular wisdom and putting that extra effort that they need to do to help the kids with that. And then an open space program, which also gets some of the parents involved as well. But one of the things I want to recognize, not just these three things, but one of the big things we have worked on at Bagnell is remember that we are all working together as a team. And there's no group in a grade level that shows me that they work so well together as a team for our students, that our grade four team, Carrie Gale, Jess Souza, and Amy Lapata, and I wanted to recognize them for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, the next group that I want to recognize. So this is a large group of students that have also gone above and beyond and paraprofessional in our building as well. And this is our community service group. And so our paraprofessional, our fifth-grade paraprofessional, Mary Ann Definia, she has started this community service group. And then the students involved in this group have worked over the school year, and they've done things like a coat drive, they've done a toy drive, they've also done something with opening up a new school store where they are creating crafts, where they are being able to, at the school store, be able to sell to kids at the school store their own things. And it's just great. They're giving back to the community. They're working with the Salvation Army to do those things. And I just wanted to recognize all of those students that have been doing that through the school year and Mary Ann for her hard work, getting the kids together and coordinating these events for our community. So to Mary Ann Definia and to all of our Bagnell students in the community service. Hi, Mary Ann. The kids in the future, just come on up so we can do a photo up here. And there it is. All right, guys, come on up here. Let's see. Well, that's close. It's got her. She's got to get there. Hey, great job with that.
All right, so here we are. Ms. Gad is going to come up, representing Paige.
Hi. I'm standing at Paige today. So we have several different groups that we're going to recognize. A little student run, a little run by me. So the first two people will have Lila De La Sola and Clara Anjes. They both won a scholastic writing competition. I have a little bit of information on that. I don't know where. Okay, so these two fifth-grade students, if you want to come on up, girls, submitted entries to a Storyworks Kid Fiction Writing Contest. They were provided three sentence starters to choose from, and then wrote a well-developed fiction story. Hundreds of entries were submitted from all over the world, and two winners, here they are, from Paige School. Clara wrote a story about a rat who mysteriously was purple, and Lila wrote a story about an elephant stampede that woke up a small town. So congratulations. I have to be an everywhere person.
Great job.
We also had a Young Inventors group that is now competing at the regional competition. They competed at, for Northern New England Young Inventors Regional Competition at UNH on March 19th, and they're now awaiting the results of the competition to see if we have winners. So third grade, we have Sam Corning, and fifth graders Liam Goodwin, Edie Spalding, and Lucy Tanner represented the schools.
Do you want to say what you invented?
I invented the pasher.
What's a pasher?
It's an invention that can clean and dry a dog's paw all at the same time.
I invented the perfect flame detector. It is an invention that keeps cats with a house furnace.
And I invented the handy hair helper, which helps my grandfather wash his hair effectively without him having to use his hands for a period of time.
Excellent.
We also have a fourth-grader student who started a fundraiser for UNICEF, Griffin Aravino. You want to come on up and talk to everyone about that?
I started a fundraiser to help train and fundraisers, because teachers bring money from starting in late March to the end of April. And we're going to donate it to UNICEF so they can help the train.
And you get a fun fact every week.
Yeah.
Because I heard this fun fact, what's the national flower?
Yeah.
And it is?
A sunflower.
Great.
All right, we also have Brooke Bentley here. She is the lead role in Annie. So she's going to come up and sing a few lines for us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And then the last group you want to recognize were the Paige School Council members. They're not all here, but those of you that are here are going to come on up and you can tell the group what we've been working on. So come on up. Oh, perfect. All right. So they all take turns reading a little bit about what we've been doing. So Wyatt Lightfoot's the president this year. Turn around. Want to read this?
We're excited to touch, we were able to have the soup. The turn to Paige School.
Yeah, we were glad to bring it back. All right.
The members in third through sixth grade were elected by their peers to represent their classes.
Good. All right, come on up. We direct their agreement.
We also have two fifth-grade seniors here this year, as well as a sixth-grade freshman.
So far this year, as a student council group, we have written notes and cards of appreciation to thank the state police and fire department for their continued service, their attention to the neighborhood.
We have brought back a status quo school to review our first period. It was definitely, and friendly of our students and staff members.
The ADs seem to be the most popular. It was fun to see everyone's creativity. We have two more spirit days planned.
In honor of the 100th day of school, we challenge each home class to try to bring in 100 non-perishable items to help support the Pettingill House and South Avenue.
The Paige School community went beyond their goal. We donated a total of 1,700 items. The Pettingill House was very appreciated in the Lord of Us.
Oh, a thousand items, that's really impressive. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you, Dr. B. Thank you, School Committee, for having us tonight. I have three students with me tonight. They're Project 351 ambassadors. So what Project 351 is, is it's a purely service project geared towards eighth graders. They do a lot of work outside on their own. They attend a lot of, maybe online sessions this year more than in person. It's really, it's a nonprofit organization that's all about giving back to the communities that the students are growing up in. It's called Project 351 because we have 351 cities and towns in the state of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I'm going to have Emily Day come on up, and Joshua Delgar, and Maddie Grimes, and they can talk about their experience. It's been a journey. It's not easy to get chosen for this role. It's, we checked with, you know, seventh-grade teachers, eighth-grade teachers, and these three were chosen as our ambassadors as quiet leaders that want to make a difference. So I want to turn it over to them so they can talk about their experience during this project.
So it's pretty much like a community service drive. And right now, we're in our spring service, which is like a clothing drive. And we've set up a bunch of boxes around the schools. And people can donate, like, what we want clothes into the box, and then we're going to deliver it to Cratos to Grounds, which is a nonprofit organization for children. And they'll distribute the clothes that we collect to our kids from our work.
We're really about helping people that are in need. There are so much homeless people out the world. 351 is here to end homelessness around the world. But we need everybody's help. So we put, as Maddie said, we put boxes for donations. Day by day, we've been making homelessness less of a problem.
And repeating what they said, yes, we're trying to end homelessness and help the people in need. And we have also gone through training and to help and put out the word about Project 351 and Cratos Grounds and about our clothing.
Thank you.
So good evening, everybody. I'm Jonathan Seymour, principal at the high school. It's a pleasure to be here. When people ask me what's great about Kentucky High School, I always say it's the students. We have exceptional students. And I think the folks that we're going to recognize tonight are just a really great example of that. There are so many amazing things that have been happening at the school and so much success from a student point of view over the last few months. And we just have the opportunity tonight to recognize that. So really excited to do that. We're going to start with Hannah. So Hannah's the school committee student rep. And Hannah has had a great couple of months competing with the DECA organization. She was also recently recognized as the DAR, Daughter of American Revolution, Good Citizen. And Hannah is here also just representing DECA at large. And if you want to go to the next slide, there's a great picture of the group. So many students got the chance to compete at the Massachusetts state level in DECA. Many of them had, you know, really good success in their individual competitions. Hannah, in particular, outstanding, and for the second year in a row, qualified for nationals. So congratulations, Hannah, amazing job. Just give a 30-second commercial on DECA for those who don't know what that is.
Okay. So we call it Business Club. So it's kind of just like a huge organization across the country, but we're mainly focused in the state competition. So it's kind of, it ranges from anything from like accounting to leadership and all sorts of different like aspects of business, kind of, in like modern society. So you can pick like any category you want. So my category is financial consulting. So this year, I did a project on mortgages. So you can like find a bunch of different things that you're interested in. So we had a lot of different kids this year, and like almost everyone did a different category. So it's really easy to find something that you like. And honestly, when I was a freshman, I thought it was going to be really lame, but I just did it. I only pretty much did it because I knew we'd get to go on a field trip. But after working on it for four years, I just put a little more effort in each year, and it's really paid off, and it's been one of my favorite activities. And I really encourage any other students to get involved with it. Thank you.
All right, so we have a lot of students that we wanted to recognize tonight, and we're going to sort of alternate between some athletics and some arts, which is a really nice balance. We have, a lot of students have had the opportunity this year to submit work for competition at various places across the state of Massachusetts. And I also just want to give a shout out to Marsha Nato, who's done a lot of the legwork in terms of entering students and actually bringing work to different places. And without her efforts, you know, that some of these opportunities wouldn't be there. But we want to recognize a series of students here tonight. So Sydney Pachet, Olivia Nardone, Naris Musa, and Jess Cooney all received recognition through the Sixth Congressional Art Show hosted by Montserrat College. So those folks are here, come on up.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is Emily here? She's not. Okay. Well, we get to brag about her without her being here. I should have you guys talk about her. So we've got a series of recognitions tonight related to some winter sports. And particularly, there was a lot of success this year in track and field. Emily had an all-time season this year in indoor track and field. She not only was state champion in the high jump and in the long jump, she was all-state champion in the high jump. She qualified for nationals. She was all-state champion in the pentathlon. Just broke records and just had an amazing season. And a humble, hard-working competitor. And I wish she was here tonight to be recognized, but on her behalf, Emily. All right, is Spencer here? There he is. All right. So we want to recognize Spencer. Come on up. A really talented, all-around kid academically. He's an actor, a singer, he's a musician. And this year, the Massachusetts Music Educators Association competition for all-state jazz band, Spencer was one of just a few trumpet players across the whole state to get this recognition and this honor. So congratulations, Spencer, well done. There's no better picture than that. All right, congratulations. So is Phoebe here? All right. So we, this is another rubia. We just talked about Emily, her sister Phoebe, as well, is a tremendous student athlete and had an amazing season. There's a couple more opportunities for us to recognize them because there's some relays we're going to recognize. But Emily herself, state champion in the 1,000 meters amongst many, many other things that she has accomplished this year. So congratulations to her. Ryan, is Ryan here? All right, so Ryan Shears had his work entered into this competition at the University of Massachusetts Starman. It's a merging young artist. And he was recognized with the Dean's Award, which also came with a very nice scholarship. And we're really proud of Ryan and his amazing work. I mean, he has this awesome style he's so good at. So congratulations to Ryan. Alex there, so come on up, Alex. All right, so here we have Alex Bishop. Play some walk-up music for you, Alex. All right, so Alex had an amazing indoor track season this year. Congratulations. He was a state champion in the high jump. He was also one of the best high hurdleers in the state as well. Just a tremendous season, a pentathlete, multi-athlete. I mean, he can kind of do it all. So congratulations, Alex, well done. And Alex's accomplishment also qualified him for nationals in the high jump. So he had the chance to go down to New York and compete at the Armory, which is just one of these like amazing experiences to have. So congratulations to Alex. So let's have the four-by-two. Whoever is here, I see Reece, and I see Sage, and I see Sydney. So I guess Emily's still not going to make it for this one. So we, again, like I said, we had just a tremendous amount of success this winter with some state championships. And then, in this case, this relay team qualified for nationals. So it's one of those things that you aspire to. You know, you want to qualify for your league championships. You want to make that state championship qualification, even just to run at the state championships, right? Then you want a place. And then there's this opportunity sometimes if you hit a really fast mark or you jump really high, to qualify for nationals. And these guys did that in the four-by-200-meter relay and had a race. Because how did you place there at nationals? 12th place. And again, teams from all over the country come to New York City to run on this track. And well done, girls, great job. And well done, girls, great job. So, we also wanted to recognize, I know we already talked about Ryan. He and Jessica Cooney and Kylie McKinnon all got recognized, again, through the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth Emerging Young Artist Competition. So, if Jess or Kylie are here, come on up. All right. Well, congratulations to them as well. And again, just a great opportunity. There are a lot of these competitions around the state for students to take what they've done, right? They've invested all the work in this artwork. And then to take it out and have someone else outside of their school look at it and to say, you know what, this is an amazing piece. So, congratulations to them. We miss somebody?
Hold on one second. Don't go yet.
Yeah, Reese, you're coming back. And Sage too, right? We have another one.
That's right.
Because we're recognizing the sprint medley in a minute. All right. So, here we go. Come on back up. I alternated these just for variety. I should have just popped them all together so you didn't have to keep coming and going. So, we were just talking about the four-by-two and then qualified for Nationals. Well, two of these girls, along with both of the Rubios, were also on another relay, which is the sprint medley. And the sprint medley is what distances?
Two 200s, one 100, and 800.
And you ran the, and you ran the 400, right? So, it's a variety, right, of races, not all the same. It's a really fun one. You don't get to run it very often, probably like once maybe before Nationals. And again, these guys had an amazing time, qualified for Nationals, went down. And you placed where in the sprint medley? 15th. All right, congratulations. I thought I saw Julia back there, right? Come on up, Julia. So, another opportunity for students to submit work through the Montserrat Art Show. And you were recently recognized with Best in Photorealism. Congratulations. Well done. She's going to get recognized for something else in just a moment. There's Adam, so come on up, Adam. All right. So, Adam Payne is a senior and two-year member of our brand-new ski team, right? So, last year, we joined a co-op ski team. And for the first time, it was kind of neat to have a ski team, right? And Adam did really well last year, was scoring really high in all of the meets. I'm not even sure how you did at States last year, but I know you went. This year, he was on the sidelines for a while because you had the wrist injury, right? And finally got out of the cast and you just came like firing out, right? After you did that, I mean, just right back to the top of winning races. And then at States, right, was it the Giant Slalom? The GS, right? Alpine Skiing State Challenge. A first in our school history, state champion in skiing. So, congratulations. So, Spencer or Julia, come on up. I don't know if Vance is here? Okay. All right. So Vance isn't here. But we wanted to recognize a couple of students that are in the Jazz Combo. They recently were at one of their favorite festivals, the UNH Jazz Festival. The group did really well. And several of our students were recognized for outstanding musicianship. Mr. Schumacher, do you want to say anything about this, these students and the Jazz Combo at UNH?
Sure. The UNH Festival is one that attracts schools from all over New England. And it's an all-day festival dedicated to Clark Terry, famous jazz trumpeter who used to attend the festival. So, it's a really cool thing. And we used to attend it when he was there, which was an amazing experience. So, in each performance category, division, they recognize a handful of students for outstanding musicianship. And three of our students were in that mix. Very exciting.
Congratulations. So, we have a couple of more artists that were recently recognized through the Massachusetts Amazing Emerging Artist Exhibition. So, we want to recognize Grace Lovesey, Abigail Sterns, and Sarah Grinnell. So, congratulations. Just got to hold on a second, I want to take your picture. Well done. Zach, come over here. So, the last piece of recognition we have tonight is Zach Haynes, is a senior. He was recently recognized by the history department, just like above and beyond work that he has done in his world history class. And I said, do you have the ability to play?
Yeah, I've got the ability to do this. Maybe you can play. So, in addition to all this, Zach tolerates the school committee by showing up almost all the time and setting up all these cameras. So, it's not just.
But he created what you called like a stop motion film.
Why don't you tell everybody what we're about to see?
Tell everybody just a little snippet about it.
I basically figured, this is basically a project about a soldier's life in the First World War. I figured, I always had a passion about stop motion and also about history. So, I figured why not kind of combine the two and try it out and kind of go above and beyond with a little tiny project? So.
All right, sure.
So, when I watched this, I was amazed. And I just kept thinking like, how long does it take to make something like this? I mean, that's what, about three and a half minutes that you made?
Yeah, it took me a week and a bunch of sacrificed lunchtime periods.
Yeah. I mean, well done, John, well done. Congratulations. Thank you.
Paige Sollyotis, principal of the Spencer-Donnu School in Merrimack. Thank you, school community, for having us here. I'd like to recognize two people from Merrimack tonight. We have Mrs. Amy Fletcher, a teacher at the Donnu School. And then we have Paige Sollyotis, who's one of the students that works with Mrs. Fletcher. I just wanted to recognize them. I'll have them come up and talk a little bit about just what they do. But Mrs. Fletcher is a tremendous teacher. Her ability to connect with her students and build relationships with her students and her families is exceptional. It's, I learn something every time I stop by Mrs. Fletcher's classroom. She teaches me something every time. And Paige is someone, as a sixth grader, that's a leader in our school. She helps out in her own classes. And she also spends time in Mrs. Fletcher's classroom, working with students there. So, I'll let them talk a little bit about the great work that they do. But these are certainly people that Kentucky should be very proud of.
All right, Paige, they saved the best for last. Here we go. Thank you. Thank you. Talk first, then pictures? Okay, that's how it goes. All right. Well, here tonight to talk about the Peer Mentor Program, Amy Fletcher. I am a teacher at the Donnu School in one of our district programs for some of the most wonderfully exceptional students with intensive needs in the world, in my opinion. And this is Paige Sollyotis. She is a sixth grader at the Donnu School and she is one of my outstanding peer mentors. So, I was going to say a lot more, but I think I'll pare it down a little bit because I think some stomachs are probably grumbling. Time for dinner. So, I'm going to knock it down a bit. But I do want to talk a little bit about the program. And then I'm going to turn it over to Paige so you can get a student perspective of what it's like to be a part of that. So, the Peer Mentor Program. All right. I should start at the beginning. Basically, the idea came to me because something was lacking in my students' program. Their ability to communicate and learn is different. And it, and the way we implement things is different than we do traditionally. And one of the things that was lacking was really real, genuine, organic opportunities for social interaction. So, and we... Did I say I was going to do this? I said I was going to do this? All right, all right, here we go. So, I'll just start with goals for the program. So, I was finding that because my students' needs are so intensive, I have what's called a substantially separate classroom, which means my students, because, because of their needs, spend most of their day in my room and not out and about around the school. This is great for them in terms of it's a predictable environment, that they're available to learn, and they're skyrocketing their skills, they're making all this progress. The one thing it doesn't do is allow for a lot of opportunities to interact with other students their age. So, the Peer Mentor Program idea occurred to me. We had tried years and years of traditional inclusion, meaning my students would be always included in a typical or general education setting for specials or anything that was going on. But what I found year after year was that we weren't making the kind of social and communication progress that we wanted to. In fact, so one side of inclusion does not fit all. In fact, I was finding that everyone was always seeing my students at their worst. And I thought, how can I think of a way to have everyone see my students at their best and have my students in a place where they're comfortable enough to learn some of these skills and to interact socially? So, so these are the goals of the program, meaningful inclusion. That's why I started a reverse inclusion program. Because we were always being asked to do what everyone else was doing. And I thought, why don't we have other people come in and see the way we do things and meet us on our level where we're at? So, the Peer Mentor Program began. And the point is to make meaningful connections. What I mean by that is not in a huge group of kids where your teacher or your parent professionals, you know, prompting you to say hello. I'm talking about kids really sitting down in a very small group and getting to know each other and how you communicate and how you learn and all those things and really having genuine connections with each other. Also, in terms of, another goal of the program is to build natural supports. So, sure, some of my kids will probably have a staff with them for most of their educational career. But wouldn't it be nice if we had students that grew along with my students and progressed through the Kentucky system with my students who knew them, understand how they learn, understand how they communicate? And if they're in the hall or they're upset, they have familiar people around them who can lend support. So, we're looking at relationships that will continue as the students progress through the district. And then lastly, but not least important, is I wanted to create a win-win situation where we have, certainly my students are getting hugs out of this. But what can I do for other students? I think that what we do, just in the nature of having them in our room and doing things differently, is we're giving them life skills and experiences that they wouldn't normally have. And they really get a chance to look at the world through a different lens and from a different perspective. And they get the opportunity to make some incredible friends. So, I have battled quite enough. And basically, how the program works is it's open to sixth graders. We do an interview process with parent parental consent. And then, this year, honestly, we had like 20 people apply and they were all amazing. So, I picked the names under the hat, but now we're down to 11. So, kids come in, mentors come into the class at times that we're not calling out of them, out of their learning time. So, recess for our morning meeting time. And we also have, our specials for my class are different. We have a small group special. And rather than us trying to go to a crazy gym class where there's environmental triggers that will make us wildly unsuccessful, we have a gym class where we have mentors come to us. And then there's real genuine interaction and togetherness happening, which is pretty cool. So, I think I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Paige. And I'm going to ask Paige some questions about what it's like to be a mentor. So, first, and I gave Paige these questions ahead of time. I didn't want to put her on the spot because she's an intelligent young woman. She's outstanding. She's a natural. And I really wanted her to give these things some thought so she could share how she feels about being a mentor. So, Paige, what is your role as a peer mentor?
My role as a peer mentor is to be a model, to be a friend, and to be there for all my friends and to learn how other people.
This is true. She's doing all of those things every day. Very gifted. So, how do you think that students in my class benefit from having mentors?
Definitely some social interactions, some inclusion, making new friends, and being understood.
Being understood. That just doesn't happen unless you make it happen. And Paige is part of making that happen. I have students who, when mentors come in my room, their demeanor changes, everyone starts smiling. I have students who maybe can't verbally communicate, but I know that they know that the mentor's there. Because guess what? Their participation increases by 50%. All of a sudden, they want to do what we're doing. This is fun. That's the kind of impact you have. So, how do you think you benefit as a mentor?
I think I benefit by learning about other people's differences, learning how other people communicate, and getting more knowledge about the world itself and learning how to use the schedule and go for speed.
Yeah, the schedule's crazy. It's not like the same days every week. It's like rotating. You guys have to keep up. So, I would like to ask you one thing. Can you explain a little bit, and I promise I will wrap it up, everybody? A little bit, when you're talking about how different people communicate?
So, like some friends in our class, they communicate with an iPad. And some people just need some extra time to process what's being said to them. And we all are very understanding of how other people communicate with each other.
And what have you learned to do? How have you learned to listen?
I learned to listen with my eyes and with my ears, definitely.
Yes. Because our students are communicating so many different ways. And to have, for my students, to have other students in the school understand how they are communicating without words is absolutely phenomenal. Mr. Kelly, you've been so supportive of the program. The secretary, teachers have been supportive. These guys are amazing. I'm going to ask you one last question, my dear. The skills and experiences you've had in the room, and Paige actually started with me in fourth grade, so she's, she's a vet. How would you say, or do you think, any of these skills or experiences would lend themselves to you in the future?
I think they will help me be more... I think I've learned a lot of kindness, to be nonjudgmental, to be inclusive of other people, and to overall be respectful. And I definitely think I want to be a lawyer as an advocate for people with disabilities, but I won't.
The whole trajectory of this program, I have students who are now fifth and sixth graders, and I've been in their lives or their programs since some of them were three or four. And so, I've had the ability to see them grow. And students like mine don't always have birthday parties. They have them, but people don't generally come. I'm not trying to make you sad. This has a happy ending. And so, year after year, I would attend this person's birthday party because I was the friend. I was that person outside the family that would come. And year after year, every summer. And then, fast forward to last year, invitations went out. And I took one for each of the mentors and I drove to their house and I put it in their mailboxes. I'm thinking, whatever, it's the middle of the summer. Well, I pulled up to this young lady's house in August and got out of the car. And what I saw was a... and what I saw was a pool full of friends. All of the mentors were there, all of them.
Hey, just thank you to all of our students. Huge, huge.
All right, thanks, everyone. That was awesome. Okay, up next, we have student rep news and superintendent news.
I feel like that was...
That's funny.
I'll just say two things.
I think half of my stuff was...
Right there. So I would just say two things. One, obviously, we're going to have some inconveniences for a while. That truck that ran into the Rockspillage Bridge on Thursday, looks like it did some significant damage. And that's, the state needs to come out. It's done an inspection, a preliminary inspection. But they're going to have to come out, check underneath to see the extent of the damage. So this, you know, Mr. LeBrecque just left, but this does have a chance to impact us financially, of course. Where we have, we're having to reroute buses. They're going over the bridge, they're going around. And my understanding is in the past, that has cost us quite a bit of money. So I'll keep you posted on anything that may change. I don't have a timetable.
No timetable whatsoever.
I do not have a ti... I've heard today it could be at least a month.
It's the state we're talking about.
GPS says June 2020.
But it's also because it's a historical bridge, there's a whole other layer to it.
There's another layer.
So even in the best of circumstances, it's not going to be a month.
Yeah, my guess is, if we're not on it now, we're looking at at least one month. I think at the end of the month, it'll probably be a question of what do they want to do with the bridge? And then you have to go from there to...
They're like arches, right?
They're twisted.
They're like...
It's not good. So that has caused a damper in transportation. Everyone's okay. Everyone's safe. Everyone's healthy. Everyone's able to go to school. It's just for our secondary children in particular, it's a much bigger burden. They're having to wake up earlier. It varies depending on where their bus routes are. And in the afternoons, they get home. The buses will, I think they'll start lineup if they haven't already. They'll line up up front, so the students get on the bus, get out early. But that is going to create some complications.
Be patient with your Merrimack people.
Yes, there'll be a lot of understanding. But that's the news I just want to share.
All right, thank you. Onto new business. We have, our first order of business is an overnight field trip for the high school.
We have Mr. Schumacher and Mr. Seymour here to... That's in the packet, right?
Yep, it's in the packet.
Hi, everybody. So, four years ago, we did our first trip to Disney with the music ensembles from the high school. It was a smashing success. And our goal at the time was to do this once every four years so that every high school student that comes through the music program gets to go on this trip to Disney World. And so I'm here seeking permission and approval to start the process for a trip that would be a year from now, April 2023. So what I've given you in the packet is preliminary proposals from two tour companies, one of which we used on the last trip. We were happy with them, but not over the moon. So we're looking at another company in Florida, Kaleidoscope. And then a third company did not want to contribute at this time. They wanted to wait with all the uncertainty in costs. This is the 50th anniversary year for Disney World, so their costs are all over the place, and it's not going to be that way for next year. So the Kaleidoscope package, I feel, is the stronger package. And I'm more interested in looking at a new company, just to give them a try. All of these companies came with tremendous recommendations from colleagues across the state that have used them multiple times. So I feel comfortable with any of them. But their package came in considerably cheaper. There are many moving pieces to this because the Kaleidoscope package does not include airfare. So depending on what flights we take, that'll make a pretty significant change in the overall cost. It gives us a range of 375 to 500, which seems reasonable. And even with the max 500, it's still cheaper than the Encore package. The two packages are basically comparable. There's a few slight differences. We get more days in the park with Kaleidoscope, but we get more meals with Encore. It's kind of a wash in my mind. So I would ask that we go forward with the Kaleidoscope package and know that these costs will absolutely change based on a number of different factors. I need to go through with this company and my rep and fine tune the packages. And then we need to look at airfare. We need to look at all sorts of, you know, additional costs and where we might tweak the package to save some costs. And we'll have a final number as soon as possible for approval there.
How many kids do you anticipate wanting to go?
I have what I hope, and what reality is. Last time, we had, I think, 38% participation, which seems really low, and it concerned me at the time. But I spoke to colleagues all over the country, and when they thought back to their initial, you know, trip or two, it was exactly the same. They said the first year was really low participation. Second year got better. Third year got better. And by the time it's the fourth or fifth trip, you've got most, if not all, of the students participating. It becomes just something everybody looks forward to, families plan for it, it becomes an expectation. So I'm hoping to get to 50% this year, which would be great, and try to build from there.
Chris?
So I have a daughter who was on the trip four years ago. And at the time, we're like, yeah, yeah, you can go, thinking it's going to be this Disney boondoggle, and they're going to have fun, but whatever. The amount of actual music experience that they had blew us away when she actually talked about the sessions that they had with the Disney music people and how they reinterpreted music. Like, I was so blown away by the educational part of this, and the kids had fun. I mean, they were going like 6:00 AM to like 11:00 at night. Like, they were, go, 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 go. And I think it's a great thing to keep kids invested in the music program, kind of, you know, that reward to have this amazing experience. You might want to mention, like, financially, how some kids do that.
Sure, absolutely. Let me just back up one step before I do that. So just to fill you in on the musical components that she's talking about. So there is an adjudicated performance that's called Festival Disney. And so all the groups that participate, they do a performance. There's adjudicators that give them feedback and go up and work with the group in sort of a clinic setting. And then there's an award ceremony, just like any other competition, where you receive an award, and there's a big party at the end where you celebrate that award and everything. And then there's also workshops. So the choral workshop and then an instrumental workshop, two separate experiences. And you basically, you get to work with the Disney music professionals that are on staff with the company. And they work with the ensembles on music, performance. And we go through a recording process, and we record music to some Disney film. And then they sync the film with our performance afterwards, and we get to take that home as a souvenir. So it's a fun experience for the students, and it's very valuable musically, as is the festival. So as far as finances go, the boosters will have, and we've already started just in anticipation of the trip, we'll have several fundraising opportunities between now and the final payment being due next year, where students can accumulate all sorts of money to go toward that trip. The last trip, I had one student who paid for about 90% of her trip through fundraising. So it does take a lot of effort on the student's part, but it is possible to take a huge chunk out of that cost. The boosters are going to be supplementing with some auxiliary costs. Last time, they took care of bus transportation to Logan. They did some food and some snacks. They provide some scholarships to students in need. The companies themselves often provide assistance here. So the company that we ran last year gave two domestic airline tickets to us to raffle. So we made a lot of money off of that raffle. And the Kaleidoscope company has specific scholarships that students can apply for to do that. And then I have some ideas for this next trip to augment all of that, and that is to go to some local businesses and get some solicitation there and some donations of money or resources. Put them on the back of our trip t-shirt as a little advertisement for them and things like that to just help defray some of the costs to the students.
Dick?
I see the word overnight here. That's singular. I'm assuming, based on what I heard, that there's more than one overnight?
Correct. So last time...
How many?
Last time, we did four nights, five days. So that's what we're looking at this time as well.
And what is your Shapton ratio?
One to 10.
One to 10. That's pretty standard.
Yes. And last time, we brought an administrator and a nurse on the trip as well.
Emily, and then Chris?
I have to say, I really like the idea of this. And so Chris's point and what Mr. Schumacher just said, I think that so much of the learning that kids do feels, can feel a little insulated from reality and that trips and experiences like this for the students gives them... The same way project-based learning gives, you know, that sort of real-world application. Like, this gives students not only the motivation of, you know, a field trip, which everyone knows is fun, but of, you know, thinking about what they might actually do with all of the hard work that they've put in. I mean, some of these kids have been playing these instruments since fourth grade or younger. And to see that they could actually do something with that professionally, potentially, or in college, or whatever they choose to do after high school, I think is invaluable. And I, for that reason alone, I think that this is an awesome opportunity for our students.
Thank you. And I'll add, in the workshops, that was a huge component of what they talked about, was treating the students as professionals. So this is what it's like to be in a recording session. This is what it feels like to be called in, play the music one time, and then you've got it recorded for posterity. Like, the posterity, the pressure, and the real-world experience was tremendous for them.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
So that's why I have...
Oh, okay. Chris?
I'll make a motion to approve the overnight field trip for the band in Disney, or band in the music program.
Yes, all the ensembles.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
So what I heard you say is, cost-wise, the students, so student numbers, ballpark. What are you guessing, hoping?
Based on these numbers, I'm hoping to keep it under 2,000, which is what we did last time. We had it just right under 2,000 with some assistance.
And that's covered by the students themselves with fundraising?
Yes, if the reason goes toward that and any supplemental costs, hopefully, we can subsidize.
And so the school committee, the expense to the school district? Is there an expense to the school district?
No.
Okay, so this is just to look for approval to be able to vote.
Dick?
Are you privy to the, you had mentioned going to businesses? Because I'm sure there are probably, with this day and age, and the way we're, you know, inflation, the, just things that are happening in families right now. Are you privy to kids that would love to go, but honestly, their families do not have the money? And I guess the challenge is, so what are you doing about that? And I thought I heard you going to businesses to aid in that challenge.
There's a couple of ways we're going to aid in that challenge. I don't know of any specific circumstances, but I'm sure they will arise as we go through the process. But again, the tour company offers scholarships that students can apply for that would defray the cost of their trip. The boosters offer scholarships. And whatever fundraising opportunities we have would go directly to those students who need the cost reduced. So we do everything we can to assist with those students. I'm not sure if, do the schools have scholarships in this situation for students in need on a trip? Not specifically. You would want to always let students know they can come to see you if they have a hardship. And then in particular, we can work as close as possible with them. Okay.
Okay.
I just might also suggest that if they have, I don't know if they do homerooms or, but like guidance, some of those people, that counseling staff that might have different kind of relationships with some of the students, they might be people that would, you know, that you or Jonathan could reach out to. I think, you know, in my school, which is an elementary school, we do things like that where parent, you know, some kids or families are, you know, they're embarrassed to ask. They have to ask for help, and especially with so many things going on. And that can be really hard for people. So, you know, as a community like this, I know that there are people in all of these buildings who know about what's going on with some of these kids and families. And that if we could just, you know, use all of those resources to kind of take that part out of the mix. To, so, I mean, I hate the idea of putting these kids in the middle of that. You know, it's just, it's real life, but it's hard.
Absolutely. That's a great idea. I can supply a list of guidance counselors and whatnot and just sort of preempt.
Even the school nurse, honestly, at our school is like the one person that, you know, sometimes gives... Hypochondria can happen a lot when kids are in a really stressful situation, but they don't necessarily have a counselor relationship or other things. So that'd be awesome.
Okay, all in favor of... All in favor? Okay, great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Schumacher.
Thank you.
Okay, and our last order of business is the superintendent evaluation subcommittee. Do I have any volunteers? No.
Why don't you describe a little bit of what's going to be involved?
Well, the superintendent evaluation, you'll get together. You will decide how you will evaluate. You'll go through his goals. You'll take the grid from the mask association, figure out which indicators that you can align judge...
Correlate.
Correlate, yes, to his goals. And then, and we let the committee know how it's exactly being tallied. And then we send it out to everyone. They fill it out. They bring it back to us. We, you know, put it all together and then present it to you. So, yes. Would you?
Yeah, we'll volunteer.
Okay.
We come as a team, but there's also a contract involved. But you can deal with my lawyer at another time.
All right. Well, I will be on that committee with you, too. All right.
Fabulous.
Well, thank you. Anything else? No? Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you, everyone. That was a nice...
Some of us have a long drive home.